Excellent. Okay. Good morning, good noon, good afternoon. Welcome to the AAAS special session Dark Energy Spectroscopic Instrument on SKY, which it is. So it's a pleasure here to introduce all six speakers. Speaking about the DESI instrument, which just as a 30-second intro here was an audacious instrument built by Department of Energy in partnership with NSF and Noir Lab. Just going on SKY about a year ago, shut down by the pandemic, but now has been able to restart operations, which the speakers did not know when they were putting in their abstracts. Like, will we have data? Won't we have data? But in fact, they have data. So that makes us even more special. There will be, these will be six presentations. We have 15 minutes for each presentation. For the audience members, if you don't know, you're muted here. We take questions via the Slack channel. So it's Slack number 303. So you can look for that under the AAAS tab. So we'll moderate that after each presentation. And let's just go ahead and start here then. Our first presenter is Satya Goncho Agoncho from University of Rochester and Lawrence Berkeley Laboratory.
All right. Hi. So David actually spoiled my intro a little bit. So good day, everyone. My name is Satya Goncho Agoncho, and on behalf of the Dark Energy Spectroscopic Instrument Collaboration, I'm delighted to kick off this session by giving you the highlights of what's happened since DESI's so far slide in 2019. So to start, I will remind you quickly that DESI is a multi-object spectroscopic instrument composed of 10 spectrographs. Each spectrograph has a blue-red infrared camera and is receiving the light from 500 fibers. Each of those fibers is placed on SKY by a robotic fiber positioner, and that makes for a total of 5,000 fiber positioners. At such DESI, you can simultaneously measure the redshifts of 5,000 celestial objects. The instrument has been installed on the Maile Telescope at the Cape Peak National Observatory in Arizona. Over five years, DESI will measure the redshifts of 35 million galaxies and quasars with the aim to investigate the nature of dark energy. But not only that, and later in this session, Andrew Cooper will present DESI Milky Way Survey. So as mentioned earlier, DESI saw its first slide on the 22nd of October 2019, and 14 months have gone by, and a lot of things happened. And that's good news because for DESI, a lot of good things happened. There have been a series of exciting milestones following first slide. To start, we have successfully completed the commissioning campaign, which lasted about five months. As you can see on this plot, it's showing the cumulative history of spectra during DESI commissioning. We have over 10 million on SKY spectra collected. They're in orange over there. If you add to that the calibrations, that would give you the blue curve. And those spectra have provided valuable data that the science teams have analyzed to refine characterization of the instruments and plan the survey. There were over 700,000 unique celestial objects with thousands of simultaneous spectra being taken routinely every night. And the redshift pipeline delivered outstanding performance verifying target types, obtaining their redshifts, providing data for survey validation and for survey planning. As an example, on the figure on the left, you can see the penalty night of commissioning, which was during dark time. And you can see that we successfully measured the redshifts of 1,503 luminous red galaxies, 2,532 emission line galaxies, and 346 quasars in one night. And these are three of the main DESI target classes. The remaining one is the bright galaxy survey, and that's during bright time. And on the right, you can see the distribution of targets on the DESI focal plane, and you can see that it's crowded up there. So unfortunately, on March 17th, all operations at KIPNO were suspended due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and the DESI instrument was placed into safe mode and shut down. So you can see on May 8th, though, the Department of Energy approved our CD4 completion of construction, making DESI the premier multi-object spectrograph and the first stage four dark energy experiment to go on SKY. While operation, the observatory have paused at the beginning of the spring last year, I really want to stress the truly tremendous upgrade work that has been conducted of the mountain during that time. DESI has considerable online and remote work capabilities, and people have been very industrious in getting work done during this time. So all this is on top of the analysis of the commissioning data and the continuing progress on the preparation for the science analysis. Finally, mid-September, it was deemed safe enough to progressively resume operations at Cape Peak. And so in November, the instrument returned on SKY for the first time in month. And after a short period of recommissioning to ensure that the instrument performance matched that of before the shutdown, DESI entered its phase of survey validation. Now, survey validation is designed to allow us to investigate the quality of the data as well as confirm the expected spectroscopic completeness of the survey. And as of December 14th, we can say that DESI is the first and only stage four cosmological survey collecting data because we have officially entered the survey validation year. And in just two weeks of SV observing, we have collected 16% of the planned data during dark time for SV and 14% of what's planned in bright time for SV. And so that amounts to tens of thousands of redshift measurements for each target class except quasars. So what comes after survey validation? That's the full DESI survey, and that means five years of collecting spectra over 14,000 square degrees and spanning up to redshift 3.5. Now, you all know that a successful spectroscopic galaxy survey has two extremely important aspects. I have briefly touched on the spectral aspect of things and more details on the standard that we in DESI have met to get high volume of redshift measurements. And all these will be developed a little later in this session, and Kevin Fanning will cover what it takes onsite with regards to the instruments, and Anthony Cremmon will go over what it takes offsite with regards to pipeline. And now that we've talked about the milestones and various highlights in DESI operations since October 2019, I want to turn to the second crucial aspect, and that's for towards the, the, sorry, the second crucial aspect towards quality spectroscopic survey, and that's the prerequisite imaging campaign. And for DESI, these are the DESI legacy imaging surveys. So these imaging surveys provide the targets for the spectroscopic survey. It's not one imaging survey, it's actually three of them, MZLS, PAS, and DAKALS. They are public, meaning that there is no proprietary period on the data, and the pilot surveys started in 2013 with the last photons collected in March 2019. And now we've gotten through several iteration of the, of processing those imaging data with the latest one being Data Release 9, DR9. And DR9 delivers a deep multiband imaging over most of the extra galactic sky, and the great news is that it's out today. So there will be a press conference to announce it at 4:30 PM EST. So over here, you can see that 2 billion sources are characterized over this footprint of 20,000 square degrees with at least 1.2 billion of those sources being galaxies. The DESI key project will observe in this footprint at declinations superior to minus 30 degrees, and that represents 16,000 square degrees of available imaging. The legacy surveys represent 1,500 nights of observation in a window of six years. And if you do the math, that means that the DESI imaging team has produced nine data releases in five and a half years. And I have listed the DR8 papers with their archive number and know that the DR9 paper is in preparation. Now, some key statistics on DR9, David Schlegel gave, covered in more details yesterday at the 2:35 session on galaxies, and I invite you to refer back to his talk if you get the chance. I'll start by noting that the depth map from the completed DESI imaging DR9 in the reddest filter, this event, actually exceeds the required depth of 22.5 magnitude. The DESI imaging team has spent over 25 million hours to produce photometry for everything with an astrometric precision below 10 milliarcsecond and a photometric precision below 5 milli magnitude. They have also recovered the shapes and fluxes for over 2 billion distant sources. The key improvements from the previous data release include a re-reduction of the raw imaging pixels. Two moles of white infrared have been included for some total of seven years of data from from OIS. These have also been reprocessed from raw pixels. There have been updates to the calibration, including improvements on the PSF to flat fields, the astrometry, and the sky modeling. There is a new algorithm that has been used that provides iterative detection of sources in order to recover faint galaxies and bright objects. There is improved morphologies for resolved galaxies, and more, and more. And in practice, what does it look like? It looks like this. If this is an image from the DESI legacy imaging survey, DR9 will give you, at least as far as we're concerned, the DESI dark time targets, the bright time targets, the DESI secondary targets, and all that is really exciting. And I can hear you ask, where can we access it? So I'll direct you to the legaciesurvey.org and datalab.na.edu. In particular, go check out the Sky Viewer from where the images I've just shown have been snapped. It's at legaciesurvey.org viewer. And finally, these represent a lot of public valuable imaging data, and they cover sure all the DESI target classes and continuously offer celestial objects up to redshift 3.5. And as such, the legacy surveys will provide high fidelity targets spanning 85% of cosmic time. But what's even more exciting than that is that it's already being used for science. And Alex Krolasky will talk about using DR9 in a study that crosses DESI and weak lensing. Pudin Zahuk will talk about DR9 in the context of the bright galaxy survey, and I urge you to consider it being the next one using DR9 to produce science. With this, I will conclude by thanking our sponsors and the 69 participating institutions, and I encourage you to attend the press conference later today. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Satya. Again, so questions on Slack? I'm not seeing any at the moment other than David Silva, I think, wants to be hired somewhere as a postdoc to look at the data again. I think that's how I read his question. Let's see. Okay. And then just while we're waiting for next talk to start, would you just want to say, Satya, anything more about the commissioning and the challenges and? Kind of open-ended question, but.
I think what I want to remember about the commissioning period is that as an observer, I've been able to see that for every issue that we've had, we rarely had twice the same. As in, whenever one came up, it got solved and moved on to the next one, which is why I think commissioning went so well. Is that what you were expecting?
Sure. No, I was, I was waiting to hear what your answer would be. Excellent. Okay. Well, thank you. And if people have questions for Satya, we can come back to it later in the session here. Let's move on to Alex Krolasky as our next presenter. So Alex is from University of Waterloo and the Perimeter Institute. He will be talking about testing gravity and cosmology with DESI and weak lens. Alex, you're muted.
How about now?
There we go. Now you're unmuted. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Right. So thanks for the intros. So you know, slightly contra David's intro to the session, I'm actually going to be focusing my talk on science that we can do with data that we already had in hand at the abstract deadline. And specifically, I'll be talking about using, I'll be mainly focused on combination of DESI and lensing surveys, and in particular focusing on using DESI imaging along with lensing surveys. And now, of course, also having spectroscopic redshifts will be extremely valuable for this work. So I'm still quite excited about the future, and I will briefly touch on how that can make things even better. So I just wanted to start off with an overview and motivation of the science. You know, why is it that if we combine DESI and lensing surveys, we can do even better than just DESI alone? And so I like to think about this by starting with the famous apparism of John Wheeler. Spacetime tells matter how to move, and matter tells spacetime how to curve. And so the idea is that with the combination of weak lensing and redshift surveys, you can probe both sides of that apparism, both the spacetime side, that's coming from the expansion history that you get from the redshift survey, and the matter side, which is coming from our measurements of structure growth from the lensing survey, which is, you know, probing the buildup of structure throughout cosmic history. And so if you have the combination of these two measurements, that allows you to test the GR and lambda CDM predictions for how structure growth will go, given the expansion history. And then you can say some interesting things about, you know, both the cosmological parameters and about modifications to gravity. Another way of thinking about this is that lensing and clustering probe complementary perturbed potentials. So lensing is, you know, since we're looking at the deflection of photons, it's probing the relativistic potential. So you know, both the space-space part and the time-time part. Clustering, since it's coming from galaxies moving at hundreds of kilometers per second, is going to probe the non-relativistic or the space-space part of the potential. And so, you know, basically, we can constrain sort of general parameterized modifications to general relativity that would change sort of the ratio of these two potentials. Now, if we want to think, you know, move back to a little bit more vanilla lambda CDM models, the combination of lensing and clustering can also help us break degeneracies on parameters, and in particular constrain the amplitude of structure formation sigma eight a lot better. And this is particularly interesting because of some recent results from the KIDS survey suggesting that sigma eight is about 10% too low at low redshift compared to our expectation from the CMB. This is about a three sigma measurement, so it's kind of at the quite interesting level, and we'd really like to figure out what's going on, whether it's a systematic or a hint of new physics. Okay, so if we want to combine galaxy and lensing surveys, we have a couple different options for those lensing surveys. One is we can use lensing from galaxy imaging, basically from weak lensing surveys, you know, KIDS, DES, HSC, LSST. And then you use your lens galaxies are galaxies with spectroscopic redshifts. However, that requires spectroscopic redshifts. So in this talk, I'm going to be talking instead about cross correlations between galaxies and CMB lensing, where we're getting the lensing from the cosmic microwave background rather than from galaxy imaging. And for this sort of measurement, all you need is a redshift distribution of the galaxies. You don't need to know the redshift of each and every galaxy. So this is already some, a very interesting science that you can do already with the imaging data that we have in hand. Of course, having spectroscopic redshifts will give you more precise redshift distributions, and so the future is also very exciting. And so here, I'm just showing some of the current and future lensing surveys that we're excited to combine a DESI with, and you can see that in all cases, the overlap is quite substantial. Okay, so how exactly does CMB lensing work? Well, as photons propagate from the CMB to us, they're lensed by all the intervening large-scale structure. And this diagram is kind of showing how that works. The left panel is showing the CMB that you observe, and the center panel is showing in a simulation the difference between the lensed CMB and the unlensed CMB. And so you can see that, you know, first of all, this impact of lensing is quite, quite small in this figure. But importantly, the impact of lensing looks very different from the primary CMB, which is dominating that left figure. And in a more tactical way of putting things, lensing has a distinct non-Gaussian imprint on the CMB, which we can extract via quadratic estimator, and that allows us to produce this panel on the right, which is basically a map of the projected matter between us and the surface of last scattering. So, and even though this is a relatively, you know, small effect, the impact of lensing on the CMB, that is, the fact that it has a distinctive shape and the fact that we understand the CMB very well from both a theoretical and experimental standpoint, means that we can extract CMB lensing at high significance. Unfortunately, okay, so it's great that we have CMB lensing covering, you know, all the matter out to redshift 1100. Unfortunately, we only have, you know, one integral there. We're not really able to, just from the CMB lensing map alone, disentangle contributions at lower and higher redshift. However, we can get some tomographic information by combining with galaxy samples of different redshifts, basically allowing you to pick out the CMB at those different redshifts. Now, when we combine galaxies and CMB lensing samples, basically we're doing a cross correlation between the galaxy field and the CMB lensing field kappa. This will bring in a power of the unknown galaxy bias in our cross correlation, as I'm showing in, in the equations on the right. And generally, we don't know the galaxy bias. And of course, it has the same scaling as sigma eight, which is the amplitude that we're interested in. So we also need to measure the galaxy auto-spectrum, which has a different dependence on bias to break this degeneracy. Now, it turns out that legacy survey imaging is the ideal dataset for CMB lensing tomography. It's nearly all SKY. It has tons of galaxies, and it goes out to the peak of the CMB lensing kernel at redshift 2. So there are a couple different options for your galaxy samples for this sort of measurement. One is using optical imaging from DR9. And this is a great way of doing things. You have a huge number of galaxies across most of the sky. However, it turns out that for CMB lensing cross correlations, you can actually do a little bit better if instead of using optical imaging, you use infrared imaging. And that's, you know, you just have a few more galaxies. The infrared imaging covers more of the sky, and it pushes out to higher redshift because of the negative K correction of the infrared galaxies. And so for the infrared imaging, we're actually using, we're using the UNWISE infrared catalog, which was released, which is released as part of legacy survey imaging. And basically, what UNWISE does is it extends the WISE infrared image processing used in DR9 to the entire skies. You can see in this picture on the bottom right. And this has, allows us to have a catalog of 2 billion galaxies, publicly available at the URL here and described in the catalog and image papers here. And yes, so these infrared galaxies from UNWISE imaging are the best sample we have for CMB lensing cross correlation. They enable an 80 sigma detection of the cross correlation, which is four times better than the highest previous single to noise. And most importantly, that, you know, the precision of this cross correlation is exactly the same as the precision that you get on the amplitude of structure formation. So this implies that we're basically making percent level measurements of the amplitude sigma eight. And if you remember, I said we had a, you know, we're interested in this 10% discrepancy in sigma eight between KIDS and PLOKs. A percent level is very compelling. And it turns out that with just these two, just two bands of infrared imaging from UNWISE, we can select galaxy samples at sort of three different redshifts, as shown here, spanning, you know, from low redshift in this blue sample to higher redshift in the red sample. And if we reject stars using Gaia, we get 99% completeness of galaxies in the sample. And so here I'm showing, I'm showing you, you know, basically, we have this really great all SKY map of the UNWISE galaxies in the center. You can see, you know, it covers the same area as the PLOK CMB lensing map. And then the redshift distributions are on the right, and I want to highlight these green and red samples that we have that are pushing out to redshifts 1 to 2 that are much easier to do in the infrared than in optical, where you really struggle to get beyond redshift 1. So, okay, so that's great. So we have our galaxy map. We have our CMB lensing map. We're cosmologists, so we Fourier transform and cross correlate them. And these are the results that we get that we have presented in our paper here, published in the last year that I've worked on with my collaborators at Berkeley, who are shown on the right. And on the left, we have the data. So as I said, we need both the galaxy auto-spectrum and the galaxy CMB lensing cross spectrum to break that degeneracy between bias and amplitude and constrain cosmological parameters. And, you know, the key thing are the error bars on the cross correlation in the bottom panel, which you can see are quite small. And then I've highlighted the detection significance of these samples. So each, you know, even the individual samples, we're detecting a quite a bit higher significance than previous measurements. And the red is the theory curve, which nicely fits the data points. So of course, with this measurement in hand, what we want to do is figure out how to constrain cosmological parameters. And so right now, we've been working very hard on doing that, and we start by testing our pipeline on mock dataset. And there, what we want to do is basically make sure our main systematics are under control, which are nonlinear structure formation and nonlinear bias, and which are uncertainties in the UNWISE redshift distribution. And so this plot here is showing parameter constraints from MOX, not data yet. But this is already very exciting because this is suggesting that we can get 30% better constraints on sigma eight omega matter than KIDS with just a single UNWISE galaxy sample. And it implies that our pipeline is unbiased despite the impact of these systematic effects. And so last, I just wanted to wrap up by showing some other examples of CMB lensing cross correlation science that's done with optical galaxies. And so this is still quite exciting. You have, you know, an independent measurement that's been detected at about 30 sigma. And so there are a couple different papers from Ellie Kitonitis and Ellen Hong, and work is ongoing for cross correlations between DR9 galaxies and CMB lensing maps. And then finally, I just wanted to emphasize that the future is very bright for this measurement. The left panel is showing predicted, predicted measurements of amplitude as a function of redshift. And red is what we can do right now with UNWISE and PLOK. Black is the future with DESI and SO. And there, we're taking advantage both of a better CMB lensing map, but on the galaxy side, we really take advantage of the fact that our current data is limited by uncertainties in the redshift distribution of the UNWISE galaxies, where we just have two photometric bands. The redshifts are quite uncertain. With DESI, we just wipe out that uncertainty. We can do much, much better. And you can see that we can really shrink the error bars on this measurement and make strong constraints on neutrino mass and a modified gravity. So with that, I can take questions, and I want to thank all of our sponsors and 69 participating institutions. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Alex. I should say, I think this was one of the best papers last year in cosmology. And it's amazing to see results where when you're, it's a little perverse to be talking about 50 sigma detections, but that's just prior to this, we were talking about five sigma detections. Let's see. Rachel has a question here. Let me just read this. Rachel Mandelbaum, regarding the imaging CMB lensing cross correlation forecast with mock catalogs, can you explain what enables you to make more precise measurement than KIDS? So is it improved area depth, difference in modeling assumptions, or some combination?
Right. So I think that the main difference here is, yeah, it's improved area versus KIDS. We have much higher area. And since we're cross correlating with CMB, it's really quite a different measurement, where we're taking advantage of the fact that the UNWISE galaxies have, you know, better overlap with the CMB lensing kernel than previous galaxy samples, since they pushed to higher redshift. And so those are sort of. And so those are sort of the primary factors that allow us to get such a high signal to noise and therefore kind of, you know, make this, you know, which is a different measurement, different sort of equal to or superior to that weak lensing measurements.
Great, thank you. And then let me just ask one other question, which is that your next step specifically on this?
Yes, so next steps, well, the immediate next step is getting cosmology constraints from what we have in hand. And then after that, the next step is using DESI to get redshift distributions. And there, there are kind of a couple of paths forward. So one would be secondary targets, you know, measuring the redshift of a small number of UNWISE galaxies as secondary DESI targets. And the other way forward is actually cross correlating CMB lensing with actual DESI spectroscopic galaxies, the, you know, main DESI galaxies and that is, you know, kind of an interesting complementary measurement, because, you know, in some sense, the sort of other systematics, things like correlated imaging systematics or, you know, systematics in the imaging that might be correlated with CMB lensing should be lessened a lot in DESI. And so we're kind of looking forward to those as the sort of two main paths forward.
So that, that doesn't improve the precision, but it helps the accuracy here then.
Yeah, exactly. That would, that would be mainly, you know, focused on like a systematics check. I think the statistical precision of CMB lensing cross DESI spectroscopic galaxies a little bit lower. But we think that we may have better control of systematics.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you, Alex. Let's move on here. Thank you again. So our next speaker is Pauline Zurich from LPNHE Paris. She will tell us about, it's, yes, the DESI Bright Galaxy Survey, which I should just say was not actually in the original DESI design. So this was added by collaborators of, geez, isn't, wouldn't it be easy to just look at the 10 million brightest galaxies as well? Okay, Pauline, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me? Yeah. Okay, I will keep my video off to ensure good connection. Sorry for that. So, yeah, so thanks everyone. First, I would like to, to thank the DESI collaboration for inviting me to, to give this talk about the DESI Bright Galaxy Survey. I was the co-chair of this working group last year and the work I'm going to present was mainly down during my postdoc at the ICC at Durham University with, with my colleagues here and also with the BGS working group. So, under lunar conditions that are too bright for efficient observations of the fainter high redshift targets. As David said, DESI will observe magnitude limited survey of lower redshift galaxies, the bright galaxy survey. You can think about this, this survey as a SDSS main sample with two magnitudes deeper, but with lower signal to noise. And as gamma with 50 times the area, but it's less complete in the, in denser regions. We aim at reaching 80%, at least 80% completeness among the available galaxies that are brighter than 19.5 in the airband with a redshift success rate of at least 95% for the galaxies which get fiber with at least 700 galaxies per square degrees over 40,000 square degrees with free passes. So it gives about 10 million galaxies brighter than 19.5 with a mean redshift at point two. During survey validation, we will confirm, oh, sorry, we will confirm the value of exposure time that we need to meet, that we need to have to meet the requirement about the redshift success rate. So we will compare basically the exposure time from the data and the one, and the prediction based on the sky brightness model. We also have started testing the density completeness and redshift accuracy. To do so, we have designed a specific selection for SV that you can see in this figure, which shows the magnitude of the predicted urban flux as a function of the total urban magnitude. The dashed area here shows the BGS selection for the main survey. And for SV, we are going beyond in order to test the boundaries of our selection. So in few words, how do we select the BGS targets from the DESI legacy imaging surveys? So first, we select all the objects brighter than the 20 in the airband. And we apply a star galaxy separation criterion, which is based on Gaia to distinguish between point sources and extended objects. Then we need to mask out the bright stars and globular clusters. And we also apply some photometric and quality cuts to remove spurious objects. For instance, because of weird colors or bad pixels. So the details of the selection using DR8 can be found in these two papers led by Omar Rizmatias, PhD student at Durham. And in this talk, I will show the latest results with DR9. Eventually, after this target selection pipeline, we have a bright sample. So magnitude 19.5 of, with a target density of about 800 galaxies per square degrees and a faint sample with a target density of about 600 per square degrees. In this selection, stars are the main systematic. So as sanity, as sanity checks, we can look at here, the ratio between the cross correlation of BGS targets and stars and the autocorrelation of, of stars. This ratio at large scales gives an order of magnitude of the, the effect, which is less than 2%. And on the, the right-hand plot, we show the target density variation as a function of stellar density. If there were no dependence, we should have a flat curve. So instead we have a less than 10% variation, which remains low compared to the other fainter DESI targets. In DR8, we had to mask around the brightest large galaxies because the BGS targets nearby had a compromised photometry. Thanks to major improvement in DR9, as Satya mentioned, and thanks especially to John Musakis and the imaging working group, we no longer need to apply a mask around these large galaxies. How, so here in blue, you can see the, the, the original mask and for instance, you, you, you can have galaxies inside that are BGS targets. And we were missing them before, but we also identified some spurious objects in the vicinity of these large galaxies. So after the target selection, we apply an additional quality cut to define a cleaner sample for the clustering analysis. In order to validate the selection, we compare the, with gamma, which is very complete for magnitude brighter than 19. When matching the BGS targets with gamma galaxies, we find more than 99% completeness with respect to gamma. So this is showing on the right-hand plot, you have the beams and the cumulative distribution for this completeness. And on the right-hand plot, you have the redshift distribution, which looks also as expected for BGS bright, BGS faint and BGS all with a mean redshift of about 0.2. So, so, okay, so at this stage, we have a clean selection of the BGS targets using the DR9 legacy imaging surveys. And now let's have a look at the clustering properties. So we can look at the angular clustering and in the current paradigm of the galaxy formation, you know, that galaxy form within dark matter halos and the correlation function can be seen as a sum of two contributions, a two halo term corresponding to pairs of galaxies within different halos and her one halo term corresponding to pairs of galaxies within the same halo. When combined, we, we, these two terms result in an approximate parallel form with a feature which corresponds to basically the one halo to two halo transition. And so if we fit the angular clustering by a parallel of this form, then the, we can, we find a consistent clustering and we have a, and a consistent exponent gamma, so about 1.8 for the free imaging surveys. On this plot, you can see the angular clustering times divided by this quantity as a function of angular scale for the different imaging regions and also for a BGS mock catalog based on MXXL and body simulation. So it shows another all consistency between the different imaging surveys and also with, with the mock we created before actually taking the data. We can also look at the clustering as a function of magnitude and see whether we recover what we expect. So actually, so you know that brighter galaxies have larger clustering amplitudes, which is the case here. So you have an angular clustering as a, as a function of different apparent magnitude beams. And you can also see that the break from the parallel form here happens at smaller angles for fainter samples. So this characteristic scale is related to the transition from the one halo to two halo terms. And we know that for fainter samples, it happens at higher redshift or at lower luminosity, which is consistent with the fact that less luminous galaxies reside in less massive halos. And also I didn't plot here, I am the SDSS, the measurements, but you can find the plot in Omar, in Omar's paper. But basically, we are also with BGS, we are also going to fainter magnitudes and larger scales compared to, to SDSS. Eventually, we can look at, we can also look at the clustering as a function of, of color and split into magnitude and color beams. The color dependent clustering is sensitive to the stellar mass. Indeed, the galaxies with red colors trace an old stellar population while galaxies with intermediate masses are bluer and younger with higher star formation rates. So as expected, we, on the figure here, we can see that brighter, so solid curves and redder, so red curves, galaxies are more strongly clustered. It's also in good agreement with MXXL, which is shown in dotted, in, in, with the dotted curves for, apart for the brighter blue samples at small scales here. But actually, we can adjust the fraction of blue satellite galaxies in the simulation and the, the all, one of the goal of doing this comparison, this exercise is then to adjust the, the mock for the DESI year one analysis. Then we can also look, even though, although we don't have spectroscopic redshift yet, we can look, we can make advantage of the cross correlations between the BGS targets and external spectroscopic data sets to infer the redshift distribution of the BGS targets. So this technique is known as the clustering redshift. In here in this plot, we use SDSS MGS, both LOSE and CMAS. And we can, the results are shown in this figure together with, with the redshift distribution of the BGS targets that match gamma galaxies, which is shown in, in black. And you can see that the clustering redshift technique provides consistent results between the different imaging surveys, but also reproduce the expected redshift distribution. Then before summarizing, I would like to, to highlight Shanghun's work about producing a value-added BGS catalog, which contains a joint set fitting for DESI photometry and spectroscopy in order to have posteriors for the physical properties of the galaxies. So for instance, to have stellar mass, star formation rates and so on. To do so, he built a pipeline to, to obtain realistic BGS spectra, which is based on ages templates and emission line fluxes from gamma. And this value-added catalog will be very useful for the Galaxy and Quasar Physics Working Group, who is interested in constraining galaxy formation and evolution models using this wide range of galaxy population that BGS spans. But as Satya said, the primary science goal of DESI is to put the tightest constraints on the expansion history and structure growth for a wide range of the redshifts. And using bionic, bionic acoustic oscillations, BO, and redshift space distortions, RSD. These two plots show the forecast, the expected precision using DESI, the five-year of DESI data. And you can see that we, we are going with, to reach sub percent measurements and cosmic distances and a few percent measurements on the structure growth. And I would like to highlight the fact that here the BGS measurements are limited by cosmic variance, the fact that we observe only one universe. And within the BGS working group, we have already started working on the non-standard methods using N body simulations. So I'm showing two examples here. On the, on the left, I'm showing a multi-tracer analysis, which be, where basically we can, the statistical measurements of the growth rate that I showed previously can be improved by considering the correlations imprinted by sample of galaxies that share the same sample variance, but have a different clustering amplitude. So for instance, blue and red galaxies. And here you can see the, the constraints on the growth rates when doing a joint analysis of blue and red galaxies compared to the individual analysis. And on the, on the, on the right, you can see that another science application of the BGS, which is using the galaxy luminosity function to constrain galaxy formation and evolution. The BGS will enable to measure the luminosity function in different local tidal environments with an unprecedented precision. So again, here, this is, this figure shows an illustration based on mocks for the measurements of the galaxy luminosity function for voids, sheets, filaments and, and knots. So to conclude, I would, I would say that I think this, this is very exciting. So I showed that the DR9 target selection pipeline give excellent results with respect to requirements. And the clustering of the BGS targets looks, look very promising. It's going to be a part of the paper I'm, I'm preparing. And we are also, we have also already started working on the, on the science analysis with BGS survey validation and year one. And I presented some, some example. So I would like to thank our sponsors and our 69 participating institutions and thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Pauline. We're actually, we're running just about two minutes behind. There's one question in the Slack, maybe you can address it there. It has to do with the, the star galaxy separation, which is a, there may be a long answer to that question.
I can, I can answer in the Slack directly, yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you again. Okay, our next presenter is Kevin Fanning, who's a PhD student at Ohio State University. His talk title is simply instrument, which narrows it down to, oh, something of 600,000 parts in this instrument. And I should say Kevin is an expert in 599,000 of those parts that make the focal plane in his background. And I, I, I think he deserves quite a bit of credit for getting the project to the point that it could have the data that's being shown today. So with that intro, Kevin?
Well, thank you for the overly generous introduction. And, and thank everyone for coming. I'm Kevin Fanning and I would also like to thank the DESI collaboration for giving me an opportunity to talk about this amazing instrument. Well, first, let's get started with what is DESI. Satya covered this a little bit in her talk, but this is sort of the overview of the whole instrument. It's a, it's an instrument installed on the Maile four meter telescope at Kippe National Observatory in Arizona. It's a multi-object spectrograph that is capable of taking 5,000 simultaneous spectra and will undertake a dedicated galaxy survey. The instrument composes of sort of three parts in this picture here. There's, there's the barrel and the focal plane up here at the top. The FEC is stashed down in the primary mirror. And then we have the spectrographs off in the shack down here. So light from the galaxies comes down, bounces off the primary mirror, goes through the corrector located in here to the focal plane, which carries the light. And then fiber cables, which carries the light all the way down to the spectrographs. That's sort of the path that the light takes through the instrument. And with that, let's go in detail of the various components of the instrument in that order. So starting with the corrector system, it is a wide field corrector that gives us a roughly it is a wide-field corrector that gives us a roughly three-degree field of view. It didn't, it has six lenses, two of which are for an atmospheric dispersion corrector, the ADC. They are in the middle sandwiched between the other four lenses. The ADCs are made of NBK seven glass, where the other four are fused silica. A lot of the design decisions on the corrector system were influenced by prior experiences building the dark energy camera. So on the right here, we have a picture of a team working on the lenses, looking through one of them, as it was completed. And down here below, we have the barrel with the lenses inside. So the whole corrector system, along with the hexapod installed on it, at the bottom floor of the Maill four-meter telescope. So this is it getting ready to be installed. Next up, we have the focal plane system, which is a huge part of the instrument. It's capable of taking 5,000, capable of collecting light from 5,000 sources. And because it has robotically fibered, robotically positioned fiber position, robotically positioned fibers, it has a very rapid reconfiguration time compared to like the old plug plate system of BOSS. The whole focal plane is split into 10 pedals. We see one of the pedals here to the right, and each pedal has 500 robots. It has a guide or focus camera. It has two fibers dedicated for the exposure time calculator system. And so the whole 10 pedals makes the focal plane system, which gives us a roughly meter diameter surface where we collect the light. This upper image shows the whole focal plane installed on the instrument. You can see a little bit the division between some of the pedals. Here's one of the guide or focus cameras. And all of these little devices are the robots carrying one fiber each. Since the fibers are, the fiber positioners are a key part of being able to get the survey as quickly as we can, I wanted to give them their own little slide. So this picture up here shows one of the fiber positioners. We have the control electronics in the back. We have the central axis, the theta axis motor, also towards the back here. And that rotates this black part at the tip. And then inside of here is the phi axis, which is eccentric from the theta axis. So it rotates on an off-center, off-center axis of rotation. And that rotates the very tip, which holds the fiber, which is held by a glass ferrel. So the positioners themselves have a six-millimeter radius patrol area. And they can, and they are spaced together on the focal plane system with a 10.4-millimeter pitch. This means they can interact with their neighbors if we're not careful. So there is extensive software behind that to avoid that situation. The fiber positioners can also be back illuminated through the same fibers, which they carry light to the spectrographs with a shutter in the spectrographs themselves. This allows us to measure them with the FiberView camera or FEC. And that produces an image sort of like this. We see these brighter, larger dots are the fiducials, which I mentioned earlier. They give us sort of a bearing on how to do coordinate transforms between the focal plane, the FiberView camera, and then the focal plane in the sky consequently. They are actually four dots instead of one, but at this resolution, it looks like just one bright dot. All of the dimmer dots are the fiber positioners, all 5,000 of them. And then these corner cutouts are where the GFA cameras are on the pedals. So about 73 micron on the focal plane goes to one arc second on the sky just to give a sort of scale of everything. And the fibers themselves carry a 50-meter about long fiber optic cable. DESI took a unique approach in this respect because the fibers installed in the positioner robots originally were much shorter, and then they were spliced to their full length. So I want to talk about a little bit of the fiber positioner accuracy as well, as we are seeing on the instrument. It's a two-step process to get the positioners to their targets. First, they go through a blind positioning, which is where the robot itself positions itself to the best knowledge it has of how to get there. That usually does very well. That's what this first histogram shows, where we have an offset RMS of 46.3 micron for this one exposure. That's on the higher end, actually, of what we usually see. And then the second step is we take a measurement from the FEC. We get all of the centroid of the dots, and we can compare where we measured the positioner to where we want it. And then we send a correction move, which is usually very small. And then we can get the fiber much closer on target. The second histogram shows one of those correction moves with an offset RMS of 8.5 micron. And the final accuracy ends up somewhere between 5 and 20 micron, depending on dome conditions. Similarly, when you're observing in the sky and you have good scene and bad scene on some nights, you also have a good scene and bad scene on our focal plane on some nights. To put these sort of accuracy numbers in scale, because they are very impressive, the fiber itself is 100 micron across. So even with the blind positioning, we are usually getting some light down the fibers if, if we just stop there. Of course, we do much better when we do the correction move. And also, as a little sample, what you might have in front of you, a human hair is a little less than 100 micron. So these positioners are incredibly accurate. The DESI also has 10 brand-new spectrographs that were built specifically for it. Each spectrograph takes a pedal's worth of fibers, so 500 fibers. And they have a three-channel design with a B, R, and Z, where the Z is near infrared. They are maintained in a cryostat environment to, to limit noise. And they have a wavelength range from 360 to 980 nanometers. One of the very impressive feats that they can do is they can resolve the O2 doublet. We see here a spectra from ELG taken, I believe this was a commissioning last year, this spectra was taken. We see the O2 doublet here, you can't quite see it with the full spectral range, but when you zoom in, you see it excellently resolved. The spectrographs also have excellent throughput. This plot up here shows the throughput measurements for each of the 10 spectrographs. We can see sort of the division between the three channels, where, where the throughput starts to lower. And this, this dotted line shows the requirement for the throughput. So we are exceeding it by far for most situations. This other picture shows the spectrographs in their spectrograph shack with all of the arms and the cryostats. So last but not least, I wanted to mention the instrument control system, which is a huge part that glues the whole thing together. It provides this extensive application framework that lets you run all of these simultaneously. It provides databases for telemetry, status, configuration of the instrument, and graphical user interfaces for the observer to control and monitor the instrument. It also has always-on devices for around-the-clock monitoring of the instrument, and it orchestrates some 100-plus applications. This little image here shows a small sample of all of these applications logging in their windows. This is generally not a user-forward interface, but sometimes the experts look at that. So the GUIs provided by ICS are also very useful. We have the controlled console down here, which is how the observers interact and interface with the instrument. This provides most of all they need to know. It gives the instrument status, it has some sky-level scene transparency measurements. It gives you what it's doing right now. So here, it's reading out the spectrographs. But there's also extensive plotting tools for all sorts of telemetry collected by the instrument. Here we see, for example, the air, air temperature versus the, and the primary mirror, mirror temperature. This was a good night where they are very close together. It also gives instrument status, like the blind move accuracy for the positioners and the correction move accuracy through the night. The alarm monitor is also very well-known to the collaboration with a wide variety of animal noises, alerting of issues with instrument as they crop up. I wanted to end with a sort of brief history showing the long road that it took to get here. There's just been so much and so much work by so many people that it's a super exciting time for us to see this all working and getting close to survey start, which is nominally March. So get ready for that. Lastly, I want to thank all of our sponsors and the 69 participating institutions. Thank you.
Great. Okay, again, we're running over by a little bit. There is a question here about the software that controls the fiber positioners and also how to account for the gap between the pedals. Again, let's just take that on Slack, and we'll move on to our next speaker, Anthony Kremen from Lawrence Berkeley Lab, who will be talking about the preliminary spectroscopic performance of the DESI data pipeline, and I should say preliminary, but already very, very good.
I fully agree. Yes, my name is Anthony Kremen. And I will dive in with that introduction. So the DESI data pipeline is one part of the larger data systems team within DESI that does everything from the maintenance of the target catalogs all the way through to the archiving and distribution of the data products to the collaboration and the global community. And so we are very much in favor of open source. All of our code is available on the GitHub link at the bottom of the screen there. We write primarily in Python with some of the more computationally intensive steps done in C++. We try and follow best practices as far as software development goes. And so we do documentation, unit tests, et cetera. And we come from a strong heritage in the Sloan, both SDSS and the bosses in terms of algorithms and in terms of sort of lessons learned in the institutional knowledge that they were able to gain. From the spectroscopic data pipeline, anyone that's dealt with spectroscopic data will be familiar with these things. We account for bias, dark current gains. We stitch together the different amplifiers of a given camera. We flatten the pixels, remove cosmic rays. And then we do two-dimensional point spread function modeling of each of the fibers before extracting all of that information into 1D data vectors. And we then calibrate those spectra and subtract sky and flux calibrate, and then, of course, fit redshift. So I'll move quickly through a few of these steps in more detail to leave time for pictures of the nice spectra at the end. So as Kevin already discussed, we have 5,000 fibers spread across 10 spectrographs, which actually are 30 different cameras. And we have R-values between 2 and 5,000 for the optical and near-infrared range. So this is an image that's been pre-processed to deal with some of the underlying CCD issues, but hasn't been cosmic ray subtracted, as you may notice. So these vertical black bands are delineations between different bundles of fibers. We keep them in, in smaller bundle sizes for easier management. And each of these vertical brighter stripes is an individual fiber. And this is actually a zoom-in view, so there's more than 500. Or sorry, there is 500 on a camera. This is actually showing even less than that. And again, we have 30 of these that we're dealing with at any given time. So to extract the spectra, we do Spectra of Perfectionism, which is from this 2010 paper by Boltzmann Schlegel. And what it does is it does a full two-dimensional point-spread function analysis of the fiber as a functional wavelength across the CCD. And it optimally extracts and outputs a one-dimensional spectra and inverse variance that are in uncorrelated wavelength bins, and that can be an arbitrary wavelength grid that you perform that on. On the upper left here, you see the amazing agreement between both data and model for the wavelengths. So we have excellent wavelength calibration. On the lower right, you see the variation in transmission of the different R cameras, just as an example. So this is 10 R cameras on one given exposure. And you can see that there is a wide variation. And so if we don't flatten these and correct for that, you will obviously get different numbers of counts, not because of any physical meaning from the targets, but rather from the instrument. And so we, we basically fit and divide these out. From sky subtraction, on the larger plot here in black, you see the sky spectrum. And at the bottom of that screen, which is easier to see in the zoom in, you see the residuals. So it's somewhat hard to see even in the zoom in, but there's a solid blue line. And that blue line is the residual after we subtract away the sky. And what's even harder to see is a dotted blue line, which is what you would expect given read noise and Poisson noise from the number of counts in that bin. And what you see is we're basically near optimal. We're, we're, we're limited only by Poisson and readout noise. In order to calibrate fluxes, we observe F-type stars on every spectrograph in every observation. We then fit that using stellar templates and three parameters. We have T-effective, log G, and FE over H. And given those and the fits, we're able to then infer the conversion between electrons in a given bin and the physical flux units for that star. We then use those stars as, and then map across the entire spectrograph in order to convert all of, all of the counts into physical, physical flux units. And within roughly 30 minutes, we have thousands of sky-subtracted flux-calibrated spectra. And the redshifts for tens of thousands or even hundreds of thousands are available the next morning. And so on the right here, you see a, an example of quasars, which are redshifted back into their rest frames of de-redshifted, I guess. And you see the beautiful spectral features coming in and out of our observing band, depending on, depending on its, its natural redshift. So I'll remind you that DESI is actually made up of five different target, sets of targets, different surveys, the last of which, the Milky Way Survey, I will leave for Andrew's talk. You already heard about the Bright Galaxy Survey in Pauline's talk. And then there are three others, the luminous red galaxies, the emission line galaxies, and the Quasar Liman Alpha Forest Survey. And each of these have, each of these extragalactics are based on different magnitude and color cuts, in addition to a few morphology cuts in some cases. So I'll, I'll be focusing primarily on the extragalactic ones here in the remainder of my talk. So here I showed two examples of quasars from the spring data. So on the left is maybe a slightly more realistic, although even that is high signal-to-noise spectrum of a nice quasar. And on the upper right is a beautiful, very high signal-to-noise quasar, which we observed at a redshift of two. Here are two ELGs. You see that in general, they're very low signal-to-noise, but you do get a very good resolution of the O2 doublet, which sort of dominates the redshift fit. You also see, of course, other emission lines that allow which sort of dominates the redshift. You also see, of course, other emission lines that allow us to be confident in our in our redshifts. So on the left here, you see the O two doublet just below 7,000 angstroms. And on the right hand one, you see it at about eighty two hundred angstroms. And as, as in Kevin's talk, you can't necessarily resolve the double it when we're zoomed out to this extent. But if you zoom in, generally you can resolve it. For LRGs, here's just two examples of those. On the right again is a beautiful high signal to noise one with the nice H and K lines. Hopefully you can see my mouse there and the 4,000 angstrom break on the left. You see some nice absorption features here and a little bit of O two emission here. And again, this is at a redshift of point eight six. So anyone that's done spectroscopy knows that these are not trivial to get. Although they're becoming easier as our instruments get better and our telescopes get better. So the question can be asked in all of these redshifts, how well are we actually doing with those? The ones I showed you are obviously very excellent. How, how are we doing, especially as you go to lower signal to noise? And so tests were done during survey validation, both comparing with existing redshift surveys and against visual inspections. So we visually inspect with human eyes, all of the redshifts and determine what we deem truth based on, based on those human redshifts. So on the left is just a comparison between DESI and SDSS. You see maybe two catastrophic outliers. But but in general, we have very good agreement between the two surveys. There's no obvious offsets or biases. On the right, I'm comparing between the automatic redshifts and this Z truth, which again is the visual inspections. We see roughly six percent catastrophic failure rate for the quasar specifically. Again, this is very preliminary and has to do with the data available for the visual inspections that I'm plotting here. Here are the three other surveys, the three other extragalactic surveys. On the left is ELGs. On the middle is ELGs and on the right is BGS Bright Galaxy Survey. And again, we see fantastic, very low catastrophic failure rates, which we by that I mean anything that's more than a thousand kilometer per second deviation from what we again deem truth based on visual inspections. And so the pipeline appears to be in a very good state in order to provide very accurate unbiased redshifts. And just highlighting these numbers, please don't take these to heart. These are preliminary. But the basic idea is that we have very low catastrophic failure rates, at least based on SV data and based on the information we have from our visual inspections. And so the takeaway is, is that at least as far as the analyses we've done so far, we seem to be on track and meeting or exceeding the expectations for redshift efficiencies and catastrophic failure rates. That indicates that we should be able to meet the numbers I give on the right hand of the screen. And there are still many more tests we want to do in more realistic situations, both in terms of targeting, in terms of exposure time, in terms of observing conditions. And those are ongoing. So with that, I'd like to thank the sponsors and our sixty nine participating institutions. And I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Anthony. So I don't see any questions here in the chat. So if we can get back on schedule here, but do you want to just make any comments about the the most difficult tasks you might have looking ahead over the coming months?
Honestly, it's, it's just the sheer amount of data where we're taking, you know, up to a hundred thousand on a good night. And it, it, it just comes down to bookkeeping and making sure that we're getting all of these through and.
You mean, you don't just look at them all?
You know, I would love to, but I don't think there's seconds in a day. It's a good problem to have, for sure.
Right, okay. Great, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the final presentation in the session. Andrew Cooper. Who's, I don't know what time of day it is, but you're joining us. You're faculty in Taiwan's National Tsinghua University. Although much of your work, I guess, was done as a fellow at Durham University. So welcome.
Thank you, David. So to answer your question, it's it's 2:30 AM here. So hello, everyone. Greetings from Taiwan. So I'm Andrew Cooper. I'm going to tell you about the DESI Milky Way Survey on behalf of the Milky Way Working Group within DESI. So the Milky Way Survey is part of the same five year DESI program that you've heard about in the previous talks. So it'll share that outstanding focal plane with the Bright Galaxy Survey. So in bright time, any fibers that can't reach an unobserved BGS galaxy will be targeted on stars between sixteenth and nineteenth magnitude. And so over the course of the survey, we expect this will yield around eight million unique stellar spectra. So that's an order of magnitude more roughly than than any previous survey to similar depth. So with that huge dataset, our goal will be to complement all of the fantastic cosmology that the other components of the survey will do by testing the Lambda CDM model in a completely different regime. Specifically by measuring the Milky Way's dark matter content using stellar dynamics. And by constraining its assembly history by using the kinematics and chemistry of stars to discover and characterize the debris of ancient dwarf galaxy accretion events in the stellar halo. So at the same time, the survey will be able to build up much larger, more homogeneous, relatively unbiased catalogs of rare stellar types, things that will be extremely valuable for understanding stellar evolution and galactic structure. And I'll say a bit more about how we select targets in a moment. So first here is the footprint of the Milky Way Survey. Of course, it's the same footprint as BGS. Mostly at high galactic latitude, so suited to studying the thick disk and metal poor halo. So the map here is colored by the ratio of Milky Way survey, main survey targets to the density of the number of DESI fibers available per square degree. You can see that that ratio is is close to to one above the dotted line there above a galactic latitude of about forty degrees, which is an indication of just how efficient DESI could be. Of course, in practice, because we share the fibers with BGS, we'll only get about a third of our targets in that region. But but that's still one fifth of all the stars between sixteenth and nineteenth magnitude in the in the footprint. So it's a mouthwatering prospect. When the moon and clouds make the sky too bright, even for for BGS, we'll also switch to a backup program targeting stars brighter than sixteenth magnitude. So to complement the the good spectro photometry and astrometry that the Gaia already has for those stars. That backup program isn't restricted to this footprint. It will go to much lower latitudes down into the plane. So this is a very exciting project in its own own right. The yield of stars could be very substantial from that, even just from twilight observing. So now I'll say a bit more about how we select targets for the the main Milky Way Survey. So one of the most exciting and distinctive things about using DESI for a stellar survey is that we can keep the selection very simple and inclusive, just because we're able to deploy so many fibers. And so the left hand panel of this plot here is showing our selection of main targets in the space of color on the horizontal axis and proper motion. So you can see that the the plot here is split into into three regions in within the magnitude range, blue, red and green. So our main selection is the union of the blue and the red region here. So the stars here bluer than the dividing line at G minus R of point seven, which obviously includes the main sequence, the main sequence turn off in the metal poor halo. So our sample here will be purely magnitude limited. Sorry, on the red side, we use Gaia parallax to pick out, we use Gaia to pick out targets that we think are more likely to be distant halo giants, so things with low parallax and proper motion as opposed to disk M dwarfs, which are maybe less interesting for our our science goals. So we want to get a good sampling of giants between fifty and a hundred kiloparsecs and beyond to get the best possible baseline for our measurements of the dark matter halo mass. And so this is the only selection that we we impose to do that. So this, this very simple approach is obviously fantastic, ideal for the the legacy value of the survey and making new unanticipated discoveries. But another important benefit is that it'll make forward modeling of the dataset that much easier. And that in turn will make it easier and more productive to compare against cosmological zoom simulations. And so things like Oregre and FIRE and their successors. And in all these respects, as Pauline mentioned with with BGS, the philosophy is somewhat similar to the Sloan Main Galaxy sample, which was also basically magnitude limited. And I hope for the Milky Way Survey is that it can have that same value and impact in galactic science. Now, as I mentioned briefly, as well as this baseline selection for the bulk of our Milky Way targets, our eight million stars will also give higher priority to very small but extremely valuable subsets of sparsely distributed targets. So things with a surface density of about ten per square degree to ensure high completeness in those samples. The two most important of those will be white dwarfs, which I'll say a little bit more about right at the end of the talk, and stars within a hundred parsecs of the sun. Which we can select from Gaia. So that's all I'm going to say about our target selection. But if you want to read more details, I can point you to the link there on this slide to our double A S research note that we've written that describes that. Okay, so now for the the rest of the talk, I'll give a quick preview of some of the early data that was taken around the beginning of 2020. So the image of M thirty three here on the left was taken very soon after first light of the spectrograph. So M thirty three just about fits on one of our ten DESI petals. And so we deliberately targeted here H two regions and globular clusters and other bright sources. It was very nice to see from essentially one of the first images that we took. This very nice clear velocity gradient across the face of the M thirty three disk. So subsequently to that, in in the main phase of commissioning and survey validation, we obtained about 200,000 usable spectra of about 20,000 unique stars. From which we've measured radial velocities and atmospheric parameters. So on the right here is our radial velocity precision across the color magnitude diagram. So you can see lots of blue, which corresponds to a velocity precision of five kilometers per second or better. In many cases, two kilometers per second for our main survey and backup program stars. And this is extremely encouraging, given that these were basically the first real data through our pipeline. With the tuning of the instrument still in in progress. For atmospheric parameters, we have a pipeline that's based on Feray, so very similar to to what's used in Apogee. So comparing one to one with Apogee spectra, which have higher signals noise and resolution for the same stars, gives us a handle on on the accuracy that we can achieve with DESI. So the plot here is showing histograms of DESI minus Apogee differences in effective temperature, surface gravity and metallicity. So there's some slight systematics here, obviously, for us to to understand. Of course, this is in the final state of the instrument or our stellar pipeline. But again, it's extremely reassuring to see the relatively small dispersion here around point two decks in metallicity, for example. And so it's great to see DESI performing so well at this early stage. And that gives us confidence then to go on and look at some interesting things in our early data. He has one, it's a normalized DESI spectrum of a metallicity minus three point two star at eighteenth magnitude from our early data with a model fit there in orange. So this is, this is precisely the sort of thing that we'll be going able to hunt for in the full dataset, that sort of rare target, not just metal poor stars like this one, but also hyper velocity stars, white dwarf binaries, carbon enhanced stars, and many other interesting things. As well as this, DESI is also ideally suited to picking out diffuse tidal streams and stars in the outskirts of Milky Way satellite galaxies or even globular clusters. So finding the very distant members of those systems using chemistry and kinematics helped to constrain their interaction with the Milky Way, their tidal heating and mass loss histories, and also the mass of dark matter associated with them. Of course, quite a large fraction of the metal poor stellar halo is thought to be made up of completely disrupted satellites. And one of the most compelling discoveries in galactic science in recent years has been this Gaia enceladus feature, which is almost certainly the remnant of a disrupted massive satellite that fell in and mixed with the inner stellar halo of the Milky Way. To such a degree that it's only now readily identifiable in velocity space. So here is our DESI Milky Way view of Gaia enceladus. So these are tumor diagrams. So these are dense stellar density maps in the plane of the radial and tangential components of galactic motion. So the two panels here are split by the metallicity of the stars. And in both cases, you can see at the top a concentration of disk stars, high tangential velocities, low radial motions. But in the panel on the left, low metallicity here, you can see the so called Gaia enceladus sausage. This this stripe with very large radial velocity and low tangential motion. It's fantastic to see that in only a few thousand early DESI spectra. Okay, finally, then, we're looking forward, of course, also to a very large and complete catalog of white dwarf spectra, many of them with lots of repeat observations. And of course, that'll be fantastic for understanding the star formation history of the Milky Way from the white dwarf cooling sequence. But there's much more exciting stellar and planetary science, even planetary science that can be done with these, with this kind of catalog. So a couple of examples here that turned up in our first spectra. So the the plot on the left shows a nice case of a white dwarf with signatures of atmospheric pollution from the accretion of disrupted planetesimals. We expect to find a few thousand or more high quality cases of this in in the full dataset, which will give us a wonderful, unique perspective on exoplanet compositions. And on the right is a white dwarf binary, in this case with an M dwarf. So with a large unbiased catalog of this kind of of system, we'll be able to to test binary population models, which of course are essential ingredients in understanding type one A. Enrichment. So in conclusion, then, in this short time, I hope I've given you a sense of the motivation and design of the Milky Way Survey and the very positive outcome of our tests on on early data. So we're all really very excited and looking forward now to an avalanche of spectra from the full survey. And our Milky Way data, including radial velocities and parameters, will be released on the same schedule as as the data from the the cosmological redshift surveys. So stay tuned. And I will close by again thanking our many sponsors and participating institutions, all sixty nine of them, for the opportunity to work with this superlative instrument, as well as the hundreds of colleagues within DESI who have been working so hard to make everything happen. And finally, thank you all for listening. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Andrew. And exactly on schedule as this project appears to always be. Let me just ask you one question, which is for these disrupted satellites, do you expect in these data to find disrupted satellites that were not found in Gaia? In other words, ones too faint to have been found there?
Absolutely. I mean, a spectroscopic survey is ideal, like DESI is ideal for picking out these things where the, you know, the signature might be extremely weak. You need the radial velocities really to 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 spot that. So called echoes or whatever in, in the halo. Yes. So we're, we're hoping to, to make those kind of discoveries beyond what you can do with, with photometry alone.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we'll be closing out the session here. Just a few thanks before everyone kicks off to whatever their next thing is today. I did want to start with a thank you to, I, I see in the audience here, I, I wish we were in person, but I see our agency partners from when this project first kicked off. So Kathy Turner at Department of Energy and Nigel Sharp at NSF, who really deserve tremendous credit for their vision and competence of like, I don't know, doing the impossible of allowing projects like this to happen and to happen really rather quickly. So, you know, it's, it's just been a number of years putting this whole thing together, getting it on Sky, keeping it on schedule. Unbelievably successful. Some thanks to them and for any early career. Kind of service in agencies can be, I mean, I hope just incredibly rewarding to, to make these things happen. Okay, so with that then, a, a thank you to our speakers and Andrew, I'm sorry, we actually should have scheduled you first. That was an oversight. But thank you for the, the six wonderful presentations, our audience, and then Robert Woods from the AAAS. As far as pulling this off, we didn't have any technical challenges going through this. So thank you, Robert. And with that, I'll close out the session. There's been some interesting chatter here on Slack. So I think that can continue today. But thank you again. Good to see you all.
Thanks, everyone. Bye bye.
Thanks for hosting, David.